Now called out Jasper County Plan for this meeting to order, we will ask Dr. Bostick to lead us into our education and pledge allegiance.
Let's stand and let us pray. Our heavenly Father, Lord God, as again and another time coming before your presence, Lord, we come to you today this evening with thanksgiving in our heart, Lord, and humbly before you. And Lord, we ask you for your grace and your mercy that you continue through this meeting. And Lord, give us wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and a sound mind that we can make those decisions that are not only pleasing to members of the Jasper County community, but most of all pleasing to you, Lord. Father, we thank you for all things, but most, Lord, we thank for your son, Jesus Christ, and then we pray. Amen?
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this afternoon.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Jenkins, second by Mr. Wade, ready for question. Hear none, all in favor of such motion, let it know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same side, the motion carried. The next thing on our agenda is approval of the minute from August 12th, 2025, meeting.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Jenkins, second by Ms. Ferguson, ready for question. Hear none, all in favor of such motion, let it know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same side, hear none, the motion is carried. A new business zoning tax amendment, Article 12-1, off-street parking.
Good evening, Chairman Pinkney and Board members. I'd like to take just a minute to introduce Hunter Smiley. He's a planner, so he's this year's fourth week here, I think.
Fourth week, yeah.
Fourth week. And I'll just let Hunter tell you a little bit about himself.
Yeah, definitely. Hello, Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Hunter Smiley, as you mentioned. I'm very excited to be working for Jasper County. I come from Georgia Southern University with a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science, a minor in management, and then after that, I got my Master's in Public Administration from Arizona State in Phoenix. So, just moved here from Phoenix, originally from the area, though. But, yeah, I'm very excited to be working with Jasper County and to be serving the county council, the county administrator, and Ms. Lisa, so, but I'm very excited to work with you guys.
I'll be welcoming here.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that, thank you. I'm excited for work.
I'm not taking your job, at least.
No, I'm still here for a while.
Okay, well, welcome here.
You didn't want to welcome him to the...
Yeah, I want to know, I want to know in fact, well, I will.
Just for the record, we had been hunting a planner for, I don't know, we probably started three years ago, and we ran that ad for 18 months, and it was very hard to find the right fit. Many weren't qualified, and then we had some other positions to fill later, so we took the ad down and just didn't worry about it for a whole year, and I posted it again several months ago, and I've gotten some good applications, but Hunter rose to the top, so. So, back to our zoning text amendment, Article 12-1, off-street parking. The intent of this proposed zoning text amendment is to amend the Jasper County zoning ordinance, Article 12-1, off-street parking requirements for the purpose of adding parking space requirements for single-family detached residential uses and shell buildings with no identified tenants. The parking standard diagram found in Article 12-15 will also be revised to show the 10-foot wide parking spaces where the parking space butts a sidewalk or green space, and curb and gutter will be illustrated in the diagram. Additionally, the parking space diagram will be moved from Article 12:15 to 12:17. Currently, the Jasper County parking standards do not require any parking spaces for single-family detached residential uses. For shell buildings, the site plans are being developed using parking space requirements based on warehousing and storage to determine the number of parking spaces that are needed, which in the case of warehousing and storage, it's one space per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area. Once the buildings are leased, the use is typically retail, office, or business space, maybe personal services, but all of those uses require additional parking spaces. Sometimes warehousing is the in-use, but not usually for the entire building. The revision to the parking standards diagram is to provide better clarity. So, this proposed amendment would amend Article 12:1. We would add in number seven, which is shown in red print, just to state that shell buildings with no identified tenants, parking requirements should be determined by the building's projected use, supplying the highest parking ratio permitted for a given zoning district to ensure there's adequate parking for all possible future tenants and to comply with the provisions of this ordinance. Then the next change would be to Table 12:1, the minimum parking requirements, to add in shell buildings with no identified tenants. We just put a little note there to see Article 12-11, number four. Oops, that needs to be number seven above. Sorry, I had it as number four, I changed that. And then we're saying in the chart that it's going to be one space per 500 square feet of gross floor area. And then for single-family detached, where it says none, we would replace that with two spaces per unit. And we put a note here just to say the parking spaces shall be provided outside of garages and sidewalks, because sometimes people like to say, "We have two spaces in the garage." But many of the garages, especially when the people move from up north, they're using their garage for storage, because up north, they have basements, which we don't have here in the South. And so, that just seems to be a common thing. So, then on the third page of your staff report is the parking standards, which would move to Article 12:1.7. This is just to show an improvement. I see another error over here. This here is supposed to be 10. We'll get that fixed. But these end spots, just where they're adjacent to the curb and gutter or adjacent to green space, whether it's lawn. Jim Iwaniki, who's our Director of Public Works, and he's a transportation engineer, he's been doing, looking over some of the site plans, we'll send him, and he seemed to think it was pretty normal in most places to require that last parking spot on the ends to be a little bit wider, so that if you're stepping out into green space, you have a little bit of parking area left, you're not stepping in a mud puddle if it's rained, or in a muddy grassy area, it just gives you a little bit extra space. And I think Hunter looked at some other examples in counties and found that this 10 space on the ends were, that's pretty normal. So, those are the changes for the parking standards, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Uh, Mr. Jenkins?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lisa, does our ordinance allow the basement and housing in this county, if somebody were to put a basement in the house, does our ordinance allow them to do that?
I'm sorry, can you...
Do ordinance allow people to put a basement, if they want to put a basement in their home? Because you know that's underground.
That's underground, and we're the Low Country. We just never see that, nobody ever proposes that, and it may be that the ground wouldn't support that, you know? And I just mentioned that, because when Mr. Iwaniki was working with me on this, he, you know, he pointed out, he showed me a neighborhood where he lives in Bluffton, and he said, and he's from up north, and that's what he said, you know? We moved here, and we have basements at home, and we don't have anywhere to store our stuff, so they, a lot of them use their garage, and they park outside of the garage. And I'm sure many of us, you know, not picking on anybody from up north, I'm sure plenty of Southerners do the same thing.
Yeah, because I do know there's a lot of people closing in their carport and making rooms, and, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wade?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lisa, all right, why are we bringing this forward as far as single-family? Was, did you feel like there was a need for that, or what? Because, I mean, you're, what I'm reading is you're asking for anyone to build a home is going to have to put some kind of parking in, is that correct?
So, that's really wouldn't, you know, when we get a residential permit, we are making sure they meet our zoning standards, but parking standards are really checked against commercial site plans, and here's the problem we've had. There were no requirements, and probably because in a residential zone, the minimum space, minimum lot size is a half acre. So, parking wasn't a problem, you have a half acre for your house and wherever you want to park. But now, we've had some of these, well, the townhomes were addressed, but we've had the build-for-rent communities that are all on one, and that required a major site plan, and as we were...
Yeah, but isn't that, doesn't that go along with their major site plan? I mean, does that something that...
It does, but the ordinance didn't require it.
But it seems to me that we're requiring it, you're requiring it now for all single-family residential.
It's hard to explain. It would be in the zoning ordinance, it would apply, but we treat a single-family residential application as treated much different than a commercial. We are doing a zoning review, but we're not sending it out to be reviewed by an engineer consultant. And so, the build-for-rent communities we had, they have applied the apartment parking standards, which was one and a half per unit, because their concept is like a, they're like apartments, except they're single-family residential with your own little front yard. But it could be a problem if somebody wanted to kind of fight us on that. I mean, we could go back, and what we could do is just make a note to say, and add it right under there, that this would apply to build-for-rent communities or...
Maybe site sizes under a half an acre, or site sizes under an acre. And what is, what are you actually requiring as far as parking? In other words, are you requiring concrete, are you requiring gravel, or are you, I mean, what is your requirements for parking?
Okay, so, we do have that further in the ordinance. You can use, you can use asphalt, you can use concrete, you can use a compacted gravel, you know, a stone base.
And, I mean, so dirt would not be considered parking?
No.
Okay. And this is, this is kind of a weird question, but it's because I'm, because of what I do, would that, if someone, if this ordinance was the path, and anyone that doesn't have a parking, would they be legal non-conformant?
They would at least be legal non-conformant at a minimum, you know? You know what, we could do, we could put a note in there just to say this applies to major subdivisions and PDDs, where you find the build-for-rent communities, they are in the PDD, they're in a PDD.
Yeah, but I have, you know, I have an issue with it being across the board like that, because you're kind of blanketing a lot. So, that's my experience. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ferguson?
Well, why wouldn't they be required to put, to at minimum, put two parking spaces in? I think that it should stay the way it is, because right now, it leaves it open to say, "We don't have to do this," and then the homeowner is, in the single-family unit, is left with trying to figure out parking space, so the builder can say, "Well, you have this plat of grass, or this spot of dirt, you could park over here or there, you have room to park." But I think that there should be some sort of platform, for lack of a better word, concrete or asphalt, where they should have to at least require two spaces.
So, again, I'll just say, a single, a single lot owner like yourself, you come in to apply for a residential stick-built house, or maybe even a mobile home. We are reviewing it to make sure it meets our zoning requirements, we're checking the setbacks, we require a site plan. When you're on an individual half-acre lot, we honestly don't look at the parking. But we're also now having newer developments that we haven't had in the past. We've never seen the build-for-rent communities, and those are just a single-family detached unit, so when you look at your uses and see that, it's like, "Oh, goodness, we don't have any requirements." Those are being reviewed under a major site plan, and under the PDD, of course, you can negotiate different types of zoning standards. Again, we have looked at other, just our neighboring communities, and they do require two spaces per single-family residential.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Dr. Bostick? I'm just sitting here thinking about my situation. I have less than a half an acre, maybe a third of an acre, and I've got a garage, and I've got two parking spaces on the outside of my garage. So, I understand what you're saying about trying to make some allowance for people who have storage problems, but I don't really validate that. You know, you've got the land, you've got your garage, and you've got two spaces in front of your garage, so why...
Well, that's all we're saying, is two additional spaces outside of your garage.
So, that's what you're talking about, allowing two spaces on the outside?
Yes. Instead of people saying, "Well, I've got a garage, and it'll hold two cars." Well, it probably will, but it might hold some other stuff. I've seen people set them up...
So, they didn't have the two spaces on the outside of the garage?
Yes, sir.
And what was it about not encroach upon the sidewalks?
Yes. That's been a problem, too. People want to add in the sidewalk.
Not parking on the street.
That's right. Not parking on the street, not including the sidewalk in the distance, the...
Got you. Okay, what brought this on again? How did this come about?
We were doing the review for one of the build-for-rents communities, where they have the single-family detached. And they did put in some extra, they used, because we didn't have a standard, they used the apartment standards, which were one and a half spaces per unit. Now, they did throw in some extra parking throughout the site, some here, some over here, some over here, but we realized it could be a problem if we don't have a standard for it.
Okay, and we didn't have anything for shell buildings?
No, sir. And everybody's using warehousing and storage, and we're struggling with that now, so we're having a problem. I've let the people know upfront, you know, if this is the parking standard you're going to use, parking spaces, you build these buildings, we're going to keep up with it. If you're not using it for warehousing and storage, by the time, you know, probably, how many buildings is that, one in Hardyville, eight or nine buildings there? It's a, it's probably 11 buildings there. I told them, "You figured your parking spaces for warehousing and storage now, you're using retail," and they will use some storage, they will have some storage, but they've come and talked to us about a restaurant. So, what's going to happen when they, their first nine buildings will probably be fine, they'll have enough parking, but the last two might sit there, and they're brand-new buildings. So, I've let them know they need to be paying attention to that, because I would hate for a brand-new building to sit and not get used.
I don't have any other specific... Okay, Dr. Bostick?
I just want to say that I do feel that it should be applied outside of the commercial use, particularly if you look at, uses are not, they change, just like you said, and if we don't take that into account upfront for possible uses in the future, you can ride down Church Road and see a case where there is inadequate parking for mobile homes, because that wasn't taken into consideration. So, I think it's, I think it's a good rule, and it may squeeze a little toes now and then, people don't like to be told what to do, but in this case, I think it protects a lot of people. I do have one question I'm not real clear about. Why is it that multi, the multifamily apartments, why did they get less, or why are fewer spaces required than, say, a single family? I mean, there could be several drivers in a multifamily apartment. It just seems curious to me that in an apartment, you're going to have more people, but you're requiring fewer spaces.
So, that was, that's just, we haven't really changed these standards, so that was just in there, and it hasn't been a problem, but I will tell you, our previous county attorney, who also was a land planner, he didn't like that. He thought that should be two, too. Apartments do a pretty good job about adding in extras, because they understand if you're living in an apartment and you have people over, there needs to be additional spaces. So, the ones, only a couple we've done here in Jasper County, Diverley, Chase, and the Brook Mills, they have done a good job about going above and beyond the requirements of the multi, what's required.
Well, I just think it should be consistent with the others at minimum, and so, I mean, this would be an ideal time to make that, if it's reasonable and doesn't infringe in some way or place a burden on the business.
I would be fine with that if the commission agrees. It's been suggested, and I don't know that the apartments are providing two per unit, but I do know they're providing more than one and a half per unit, so I don't see it being a real hardship.
Okay, to change it to two?
Right.
Okay. That was it for me. Thank you, Lisa.
Uh, Mr. Lee?
No comment. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, this is, am I in order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
It's just so amazing that this subject came up. This morning, I, you know, I watch these house money shows, and this name exactly came up this morning, ready for, ready for rehabbing these houses in the community, and the houses was on the market for about $400 and some thousand dollars, and they had people in and out, good feedback, but then the house sat for a couple of months, and nobody got called them back. So, they went back and took a survey and wondered why all the good feedback, nobody wanted to buy the house. Well, one of the reasons why they didn't buy the house, because they had no outside parking. And they had to go back and order to sell this house, they had to pay about $50,000 to sell this house. And that was one of the reasons why these communities didn't have plenty of land housing, because they had no outside parking. This morning, I saw that, too. This guy lost money, because they didn't have no outside parking, and people wanted housing, where they got outside parking.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, uh, Mr. Wade?
Uh, well, I would just like to, my thinking on this is, we're always talking about affordable housing, well, you're, now you're asking, for someone that might be putting out a manufactured home, you're asking them to put in parking, which is going to cost them $10,000 at the minimum?
Depends on what material they use.
For real.
I mean, you could use...
Even, even if they use gravel, crush and roll.
Asphalt millings or something are fairly cheap.
You're still, you're still supposed to, you know, by the time you grade it, you're still, you're still getting close to 10.
But then the flipside, and that is the issue you'll have on the street, the parking.
But wouldn't you require builders to put that in there, and their cost of building the house, the outside parking, but it pays, or you're not builders?
Well, I, I agree.
I'm just asking a question.
I understand why you're wanting the standard, I understand that. I just kind of don't agree with making someone that's, that's, you know, struggling to buy land, putting a manufactured home out there, and now you're going to make them put parking in. Again, I just don't see that. This is a rural county, the, you know, the planning commission is for Jasper County, it's not for the municipalities. Now, if it's a pud, you're going to have it in the puds. So, that, that's just my thinking, again, I'm...
And in a major subdivision. If you're creating residential lots, like where you live, Dr. Bostick, in a major subdivision, that's looked at, too.
And I totally agree with the shell housing, I mean, that, the shell, the shell buildings absolutely need parking.
And like a mobile home park, that, they're going to be required the same. You know, of course, it's going to ultimately be up to the majority of you and how you vote, but I'll just say, what we could do with single-family detached is just put an exemption only for the single lot, single-family detached, you know, on it, just, we need to word that better, because the build-for-rent community is, they are a single lot. So, I think you understand what I'm saying, just the individual property owner.
Ms. Lisa?
Uh, Lisa, when you, you mentioned a mobile home, but well, all homes should have a certain amount of setback, is that parking area in front of the house is considered a part of that setback?
The parking area is not, but it cannot infringe on an easement, a right-of-way, or if there's a required buffer.
All right, so if I've got my house and it's got a 20-foot setback, I can add a parking lot in the front of my home?
That's right. And our minimum that we require on the front is 25 feet on a minor road, which is usually like a county road that's a dirt road, or a private road. It's not a state road. A state road, we require at least 35 feet setback. If it's multi-lanes, it's 60 feet.
Mr. Lee?
So, they all would provide you space.
I mentioned rental property at one time, and they had four mobile homes, and what it's, you know, I just had, you have to have parking spaces in front of it, it's not gravel, it's not all that, but you have to leave at least a couple of spaces in front for people to park. And to be gravel or concrete would be a different story, but it was out in the country, so we just left the space and went with it like that. Anyway, I'm finished.
Okay. You know, I do think it's a balance, but we have a tremendous number of people who own mobile homes, and they rent them out, and this would... And this would provide some protection for those folks. I have a feeling that if you're buying a mobile home, you are not, in fixing this up for yourself, you're not gonna mind fixing two parking places with some surface. Where you find the people that aren't willing to spend a little bit of extra money is people who are in it to make a dollar. And get at them right around, and you kinda know if you live in the area, which trailers are rented and which are owned, and you will see that those that are rented out, typically those people have poor living conditions. And I think this is a simple matter to require everybody to provide. I agree, we owned a mobile home at one time too, that we rented out. And there are a lot of people doing that, to make a little extra money. And I think that this is the place that we protect those people by putting in some rules like this upfront. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a comment on your statement about basements. About thirty years ago, on three twenty-one, someone did have a house with a basement, and it constantly flooded.
Ms. Jones?
Yes, and they ended up sealing it up, I think.
Oh, yeah, I was just wondering why.
We are just not the area of basements.
Mr. Lee?
Oh, there's two other things I think we need to be a little more specific on. We do need to have some type of list of materials as well. That way, somebody says, oh, I've got a sand pad over here, or something of that matter. We need to have some type of list of materials. And also, I believe, I mean, you've got clear dimensions here, and the parking standards over here on this page. We also do need to have something, is it twenty-five by ten? Or, I'm sorry, that would be twenty-five by twenty, possibly, or are you talking twenty by twenty? What sizes do these people require to have?
So that's what we do have here on the parking diagram, and it depends on the type of parking space you're doing. Like you have your sixty-degree, forty-five-degree, thirty-degree, these are your ninety-degree parking spaces.
I'm referring more to the single-family detached and the residential uses. What would that size be? If it's two spaces? What are those dimensions? We need to have that specified as well.
So, so the ones where we do the plan reviews, they're gonna pick a parking space like this, like the build-for-rent community. If it's a, we require ten feet in length, let's see, nine feet for, as far as the... I'm sorry, I'm, it's, we require twenty feet as far as the depth. On the sixty-degree, it's twenty-one feet, and on the forty-five-degree, it's nineteen feet and ten inches for the depth of the stall. The width is typically nine feet. What we're proposing tonight is those end spots on the ninety-degree to be ten feet wide. And then, we do have material requirements in Article Seven of the Land Development Regulations. And basically, the biggest thing of that is it has to meet the International Fire Code. It has to be able to support a fire truck. He needs to be able to access your property and turn around. I mean, they do take into account, they can pull a hose a hundred and fifty feet, but they also need to be able to reach all four sides of the house with that hundred and fifty feet. So if your house is fifty feet wide, he's only gonna wanna really pull that, no more than a hundred feet. So he has that fifty feet to get to the back of the house.
And also a comment on the ten-foot versus the nine-foot space, and I do believe the ten-foot's more safe. Just for people stepping out, like you're saying, an uneven surface like a curb could hurt somebody. And just the other day, I saw somebody, they pulled up, they stopped, and they let their wife out, and then they backed in the spot, because it was so tight, you know? And they had the curb right there on the edge. So I mean, this is gonna be great to have the ten-foot versus the nine. Thank you, sir. That's all.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I do that would be an asset to this country. If you come out to where I live, I need three parking spaces, because, you know, when it rains, this whole, I don't have no parking space. But I'm grandfathered now, but if I have to do that as women, I know that I have to put something in there. But it's horrible in the whole country, we need something to address that.
Excuse me, with the parking spaces, we make sure we make it clear a minimum of gravel, and, you know, not asphalt or concrete, because that's expensive. But to any homeowner, manufactured house, or stick-built house, it's to their advantage if they got gravel parking spaces. Because, I mean, over time, you just put it on the dirt, you have big potholes there that, just not usable.
So our fire marshal does like to see a surface on top of the dirt, he doesn't want it to be just dirt, because the International Fire Code says it has to hold up in all weather. He does allow the recycled asphalt mellons, that isn't allowed use after, you know, after a while of driving, and then it becomes very compacted, so...
It's more expensive than gravel.
Is it? And of course, the gravel's allowed too, you know, and rock, stone.
Any more questions coming? I'm ready to entertain a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion that we, though the recommendation is coming from Lisa.
Motion by Dr. Bostick, that we approve the recommendation coming from staff, seconded by Ms. Ferguson. Ready for question?
Sorry. Does that vote include the two spaces for the multifamily apartments that Dr. Butler suggested?
I didn't catch that.
Sorry. If you look at the residential uses, everything's two spaces, except for multifamily, it's one and a half. So she suggested two spaces to keep it all the same? And I told her, I was fine with that. I think the apartment...
You wanna amend your...
I would amend my motion to approve it too.
And still second.
Thank you.
Ready for question? Hand none, all favors sought motion, let nobody say aye?
Aye.
Any opposes?
Aye.
Okay. Hold it, tap one.
Was that Mr. Wade? Okay.
Uh, next thing, item B, road name petition, Walter Simmons Drive.
Sorry about that. The applicant is requesting that an existing unnamed road be named Walter Simmons Drive. The subject road is a county-maintained road. It serves four vacant lots. The applicant has purchased two of the lots and wants to obtain an address for one of the lots. The Jasper County E-911 Address Coordinator has determined that the road should be named in order to issue an address, because the road is not named and is greater than five hundred feet in length. The road name petition has been properly submitted to the Address Program Administrator, who in conjunction with the Emergency Services Director, has determined there are not any conflicts with any other road names. In accordance with the new road name, which really, it's not a new road, but it is a new road name, because it's been an unnamed county, it's a county-maintained road, it's existed, but it went, it didn't serve any of these properties. It just kinda went through these properties all the way to the back. So, no new public roads in the unincorporated area of the county shall be named without the approval of the Planning Commission upon the recommendation of the Address Program Administrator. The name of any new road, public or private, shall not be duplicated or be confusingly similar to any other road name already existing. The names of private roads, which require naming to facilitate postal delivery and emergency response, shall be recognized by the county at the request of the citizens who own property adjacent to the road. The name of the private roads shall be commonly known to the community. In the event that there are two or more recommendations of names, the Planning Commission shall determine the name, given recognition to the name preferred by at least fifty-one percent of the property owners on the road. However, this shall not constitute acceptance or dedication of the road by the county for maintenance or other purposes. The road name petition is in compliance with the Jasper County Road Name Ordinance. As such, staff recommends approval of the road name Walter Simmons Drive.
So they got one person living on that road now.
Yes, that is the person who wants to build there, and he was trying to get a nine-one-one address.
On the back, they got Michael Simmons.
Yes. Yes. That's the property at the very back.
Where's it? Here.
Application is by somebody else.
Sir? I'm sorry, what'd you say?
The application is submitted by someone else.
Yeah, so I believe this property all did belong to the Simmons family. It seemed like there were two names, but they all seemed to be the same family. And so I believe the family of Mr. Michael Simmons has sold it, at least these two lots, to this individual.
Mr. Lee?
No questions, sir.
Dr. Bostick?
I just wanna clarify. The person that lives in the one residence that's visible on this, on this road, was Michael Simmons? Is that right? That is correct?
Yeah.
And his...
So at the very, very back is Mr. Simmons.
Okay, but he's not, or that family is not the one requesting the naming of the road?
No, they actually, at the very back, they're addressed off Old Fleming Road. And this red line indicates the road that goes through the property. And so as you can see, these four lots behind the Simmons, this lot, this lot, this lot, and this lot, they don't have any access to Old Fleming Road? So those four lots will need an address eventually. Right now, this applicant is, he's purchased two of these lots, and he's gonna build a house there.
Okay.
Or put a mobile home. I'm not sure which one. But he had to get a nine-one-one address in order to get a permit. And when he did that, then the address, the program address administrator decided, you know, it's over five hundred feet, it needs to be named.
Okay, what about the property owner on the other side, before you get to this property? Are they in agreement with this? I mean, do we, do they have permission to have this road travel through their property?
Yes, that was my question too, to begin with. There's an easement that was established many years ago, and it, again, is a county-maintained road. The county has been maintaining this road, and it's in the system.
I mean, if we name it, and, I mean, do we have that easement on record?
Yes.
We do, okay.
He did send me a copy, and I'm sorry if I didn't put it in here, but yes, we do have it.
As long as, I just wanna make sure we aren't naming a road that we don't have legal authority.
I did not believe this was a county-maintained road when I received it. So I was like, oh, we need this, and we need that, you know, so...
So we have the legal authority to travel, or they do, over that property? And the man who lives in the back that owned all this property, we don't know how he feels about naming this. Is this his father or son?
So he, didn't he sign this, so he has, he has signed off on it. He's the one that signed the petition.
Oh, it's on the back here.
Yeah, so I felt like maybe they had an agreement.
That's not a signature. That just says he owns property.
Yes.
I mean, my concern is, if this man does not agree with this naming, I mean, if it's his family, he may very well. Do you know, Mr. Peavy, what would you think?
Mr. Simmons? He sold the property to this individual, right?
Two of the properties.
Well, he did sell the property, but that doesn't mean he wants the property named.
Well, he signed the petition.
That Walter Simmons Drive, that's grandfathered.
Gotcha, okay.
I figured they must've had that worked out before the petition got filed.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
And I know Mr. Simmons too, yeah.
We'd be coming back and renaming it.
Is this Mr. Simmons' home up here at the beginning of the road?
Over at the Old Fleming, you know, facing Old Fleming Road? Yes, at the top of the page.
So that road in front of his house is not named right now either? Where the red line, where the red line stops, and the rest of that's not named?
So at the bottom of the screen is Highway three thirty-six in yellow. And so this comes, if you are familiar with where Old Fleming Road is, off of Highway three thirty-six, this road exists. I went out there and seen it myself, but I travel that way quite often when I go to my mom's house, I go that way. And so I took a look at this, 'cause again, I didn't know it was a county-maintained road, it's not named, and it's a well-established road. It must've only been used by the Simmons. They were, they did own all those other properties. They've only sold two of them. I'm assuming they're probably gonna sell to the other two properties. So it seems like they were the only ones using the road. You know, that's, but they're addressed off of Old Fleming Road, there in the back.
Old Simmons Road?
Old Fleming Road. That's where their property address comes from, and that house faces Old Fleming Road.
Which is at the top of the screen?
At the top of the screen.
Okay, so that's why they...
And, you know, you could see, if you went back, I put, I went back to previous Google views, aerial views, and you could see where the Simmons property at Old Fleming Road, they were going all the way through that property to go to these properties. And now that they've sold it, you can understand they probably don't want that traffic coming through there, although there is a road. But it really came down to the applicant trying to get a building permit. He applied for a nine-one-one address, and he was told that he had to get the road name first.
I'm good. Thank you.
Ms. Ferguson? Mr. Wade?
None.
Mr. Jenkins?
There's two questions. Lisa, nobody lives on this road because of being now, right?
Nobody lives on this road right now, but someone is, and they're trying, they're trying to go through the process. I don't know if they're planning to build a house or a mobile home, but I do know they are trying to get a permit.
And the road that Michael live on already have a name?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm ready to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Jenkins, offer a motion that we name, propose name Walter Simmons Drive. Grant the petition to name the road Walter Simmons Drive.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jenkins, the name of the road Walter Simmons Drive, seconded by Mr. Wade. Ready for question? Hand none, all in favor, sought motion, let nobody say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? By the same side? Hand none, motion is carried. Discussion, reschedule to November eleventh twenty-five, twenty-two and five, Planning Commission meeting.
When we prepared your, your two thousand and twenty-five's meeting schedule, we failed to realize November eleventh is Veterans Day, the county buildings will be closed. So we need to reschedule that meeting. Staff would like to suggest the very next day, Wednesday, November twelfth, or the next Tuesday, November eighteen, if that suits your schedules.
What says the commissions?
Twelve is good to me.
I have a question. You're, in the next thing we're gonna talk about, you're proposing that we meet on the thirteenth?
Yes, yeah, that's a good point. I've already forgotten.
That was my question as well.
Yeah, so...
Why would we just do it all at the same time on the thirteenth?
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you why. We're expecting a pretty heavy agenda for the Planning Commission meeting. So I don't know if you wanna be here. You know, your training will be three, three and a half hours. We're expecting Deerfield to come back next month, that they're gonna have a development agreement. And then we, I've already received a rezoning application. I'm expecting another rezoning application. They told me they will make the deadline. And we have four road name petitions, all for next month. And our submittal deadline is not here yet, so we could get even more. That's the only reason I had thought about that, Mr. Wade, but I thought, wow, I don't know, they might, that might be an eight-hour day, I don't know. Don't know if you wanna be here that long.
Well, if we don't do it on the thirteenth, I would go for the eighteenth myself and split it between two weeks.
Yeah, I did want to point out the continuing education would be the next morning. I mean, if y'all were up for a long day on the thirteenth, we're.
Can we meet earlier?
Willing to do that, we could um.
I mean, otherwise, like, you know, I would.
We could call a one o'clock meeting.
If we did it, like, you know, took a break for lunch and then came back.
Yeah, yeah, you could certainly do that, say two o'clock if you wanted to, whatever you think. Um that's totally up to y'all.
Depends on the working people.
I mean, that's fine with me, but you know, that depends on everybody else.
What day are we talking about?
Thirteen.
Thirteenth of November.
We have our continuing ed and then after the continuing ed, we'd have a meeting at what, like two, something like that?
Yeah, that's what you wanna do. And we did plan to provide um sandwiches for, you know, because you're here for several hours to work through the continuing education part.
We didn't have anything with Harderville on the thirteenth?
We had the planning, the continuing ed, right, at from nine-thirty to twelve forty-five?
Mm-hmm.
That's on thirteen. It seemed like I had something to talk about for doing something with Harderville on the thirteenth. Did you call us about something like that or?
I might have told you about um we were trying to schedule a joint meeting with county council.
Alright, so that's not, that's not.
Those dates have not been determined yet.
So that's out. I just had it on my calendar for some reason.
Oh. I might have told you. So I was planning on um just proctoring.
We don't have it scheduled, I'll just take it off, no problem.
Yeah, well, we have the um continuing ed scheduled.
Okay.
Yeah, and I was planning on proctoring that and then I think that might have been one of the dates I was going to choose anyway, or in December. Um I had emailed South Carolina Association of Counties, they didn't have this um education opportunity on their website, on their calendars. I emailed them, they never responded. So I'd already been looking to find a class that I could um proctor for y'all. And then all of a sudden, like, af- the day after I did all that, they.
Well, I'm good with that date.
They sent this continuing ed out, so.
I'm good with the thirteenth for the continuing ed, but not for the meeting.
Okay.
It's up to y'all.
You don't want to do the meeting that same day?
It's not that I don't want to, but I don't want to fly out at night.
That night?
Yeah.
Oh, you can have it.
No, but it's.
Okay, gotcha. Well, the continuing ed is important, you'd be here for that. You just missed the meeting.
Right, because it's. Lisa, is it possible to move the continuing ed to the eighteenth?
Well, if we do the live webinar, this is the time.
Yeah.
We can do it later, but it wouldn't be live.
No, okay. She just missed the meeting, it has nothing to do with wrestling, I swear. She just missed the meeting, she said.
But just?
Oh, that's what you said now. No, I didn't say just. Oh.
Are you gonna be back on the eighteenth?
I'll be back for the meeting.
You will be back, yeah.
Somebody make it business.
The eighteenth is like. I say we meet on the eighteen, if, as long as.
For the meeting.
For the meeting.
I can do the continuing ed because it's over at twelve forty-five.
And we could do the continuing ed on the eighteenth, it just won't be live. We're not gonna participate in it, are we? We'll just be listening to it live?
Well, I mean, you could if you wanna call in and ask questions, you know, we can. How, you know, after COVID, they changed things during COVID. It might be that you submit, submit it on the computer, any questions.
Oh, I bet it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just did an orientation last week and I was able to submit questions.
Over there.
Yeah, they, you know, they changed a lot of it during COVID. Um I think you, we used to have a phone where we could dial in, but um you submit the questions.
I'm ready to entertain a motion, which way we should go?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we schedule the uh continuing ed and the uh regular meeting for the eighteenth.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Dr. Buck, that it be scheduled for the eighteenth. Uh the meeting and continuing education, second by Dr. Buck, ready for question?
Um I have a question.
Yeah, you said the eighteenth would be different if you would do it on the thirteenth.
It won't be a live webinar. It is a little bit more work on staff because we have to provide the um the certificates if you don't participate live. And we would have, I mean, not to say we can't, I'm just saying, um.
Well, you know, that, that, you know, that's a little bit complicated. Obviously, why we can't do the continuing ed on the thirteenth and our meeting on the. Well, we could do that, but yeah. Then you're coming here twice. Yep, you're gonna come twice anyhow because. No, because if we go on the eighteenth and do both at the eighteenth.
Same day.
We'll do all once. And not only that, our previous meeting, we have not done live, live. Last year, we didn't do live, I think. Yeah, we did it live.
Yeah, we did live last year and the year before, but, but for the other years, we weren't having the, and we were about to run out of materials.
Right.
And so that's why I spent some time looking through the materials, which I did find one. Um and the only other thing is we have to hope they'll have this posted, but if not, we can do the other one um that is available that we haven't done.
When you kept saying, what's the difference between the one on the thirteenth and the eighteenth? What's the difference?
The difference is um the staff would pro- you know, we, like, I would have to be the proctor of the continuing ed. I would use their materials, but then they will not provide us with the sign-in sheet and the certificates. We have to provide that, which I can do. Um it's just a little more work. The only, only thing I do see that, I don't know how long that takes them to do the live and post it to that learning portal. But there is another one we can do if we miss this one, is the one I had been looking at.
My only question is what?
Do you have a preference for what we do? What do you think?
If we did it on the eighteenth, what time would our meeting be?
Well, that was gonna be my question. That's what I was gonna ask if we were to do it on the.
Would be the same thing as the thirteenth?
Eighteen.
Now, if we do them both, if we're gonna do them both on the same day, I'd like to move the meeting to two o'clock because I don't live here.
Yeah, and it is gonna be a later meeting then, the time's gonna be changed back, so it's gonna get dark earlier that night. That's up to y'all. I mean, we'll provide you with material, that's not a problem. Might not be the same as the live webinar. If, if it's posted, we can do it, but if not, there's another one we can do, so.
Alright, previous question? And no other? All in favor of that motion, let nobody say aye?
What is the motion that we want to do on the meeting?
It's my opportunity. We didn't mention moving the meeting back to two o'clock.
We would do the meeting and the uh continuing ed on the eighteenth. I heard the motion, anybody second it?
Yeah, it was second. So I mean, all we need to vote, and she should make that motion about time after you finish.
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor of such motion, let nobody say aye?
Aye.
Any opposes? But we've moved the meeting to the eighteenth and we have the uh continued education on the eighteenth. Uh Dr. Buck said you wanted to make a motion about the time?
Do you need us to make a motion to move the meeting time to two o'clock on the eighteenth?
It wouldn't hurt, yes.
Okay, I, I move that we um move the ma- meeting date for November eighteen to two o'clock.
We heard the motion, do I hear second?
Second.
Motion made by Dr. Buck, second by Mr. Wade, we have our meeting on the eighteenth at two o'clock, ready for question? Hand none, all in favor of such motion, let nobody say aye?
Aye.
Any opposes? Hand none.
So what time would the continuing ed start?
Nine o'clock, nine-thirty.
Um we could start at nine-thirty or ten o'clock. I was just doing the math. If we're not, they allow that extra time for the breaks and all. It's three hours, you may wanna take a break, fifteen minutes, three and a half hour, probably nine-thirty, I think, just like they had.
What time will lunch be provided?
Um we will plan to have that, you know, immediately. We'll have it.
Cause we'll have about an hour.
Prior to the end of the, prior to the closeout of the continuing ed.
Okay, uh open discussion. I had talked with uh Ms. Wagner and she's looking for me. For parks, there's only allowed in general commercial. And she said we discuss to see how y'all feel about it, the possibility that it could be in community commercial with all the other guidelines following it. You wanna give us updates, some information to it?
Yes, and I think, you know, we'd certainly have to um define what type of parks. Is it all parks, is it recreational parks, is it passive parks? Um so previously.
If you remember, when they had the situation with the soccer field.
Yeah.
On Old Charleston Road, there wasn't a clear definition of what the guideline was for the park. And there's other communities wanting to do parks and wanna make sure we have a clear guideline of what zoning it should come under and what stipulation they, they need.
So that was back in June, we had talked about, um we kind of looked at soccer field and we made some suggestions that it be a conditional use that would only be for youth sports only. You know, maybe that's what was proposed for that. Um then we said um minimum lot size of five or ten acres. Um maybe if, well, I'll just finish going through it. We had a limit of a, to maximum occupancy of a hundred people. Hours of operation, eight AM to seven PM, alcohol strictly prohibited. Um and requiring a site plan to address all zone and land development requirements, to include parking setbacks, buffers, landscape and lighting, bathroom facilities, and trash disposal. We didn't follow through with this for reasons y'all heard from the community. Staff did have a meeting with um our Parks and Rec Director and um some other members of staff. I know it was not, this was not supported by our Parks and Rec because I think it was viewed more of it could be in competition, a private with what a commu- what the county could offer. Um I think with some of my discussion with Mr. Pinkney, maybe, hmm, you know, I guess it'd be up to the planning commission which way you wanna go, if you wanna recommend anything, maybe you don't wanna recommend um youth. I think we would need to define again whether it's um a park for recreational purposes or um again, would it be both of recreation and passive? I think we need to determine that. Then maybe you decide to make it smaller, maybe it's, if it's just gonna be in community commercial, keep it out of residential and rural preservation, maybe no more than two acres or no more than three acres or no more than five acres.
Lisa, I'm, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um I think that, to me, one of the first things that needs to be decided when we talk about parks, are we talking about a business, which is what was offered for Old Charleston Road versus a community park? I, I can't imagine anybody being in opposition to a community park, which is typically free, typically doesn't have alcohol, um you know, throughout the park. And so the goal there is where the whole thing starts. It's not to make money, but it's to provide a unique opportunity for the families and others that. So defining what we're talking about has to be the first thing. And that would, I think that would go a long way to um take care of the issues that we saw from the community residents. I'm sure they would love somebody to come in and put a real park there. Um but not a business that, like what was operating illegally there.
Mr. Chairman, um when uh I look at this as a legal transaction, what did the county attorney say about? Is it legal what they're doing out there or is it illegal or is it legal? What, what did the county attorney say? Because, you know, I'm looking at this thing, maybe we down the road, we may have some legal problems.
So what happened with the soccer field that you know, they led us to believe that it was for the youth and of course, everybody wants to help the youth, you know, or children. Um but it turned out it was really more about the adults. And the operation that was taking place was illegal. It wasn't permitted or had a business license. Maybe it's something you wanna consider for nonprofit. Or, you know, a nonprofit type of organization, 501(c) or um.
I, I, you know, I just don't want the county and else getting into a legal battle. I, I, I'm just concerned about what, what the legal stuff, what the county attorney say about?
No, let me explain.
Oh, yes, sir, okay, good.
This not specifically pertaining to what the soccer field and topic. This is broad for the whole county.
Oh, okay.
If I wanna set up a park.
Okay.
What guidelines the county give me that I can set it up? If I wanna do a baseball field and tennis court? Right now, there's no guidelines say that.
That was my question, that's what I was asking.
And, and that's why I said the first thing we need to do is define what this is.
Right.
Can, can we have for-profit parks set up in this county? Is that typically done other places?
That's basically my question, Mr. Chairman, is.
Well, I mean, it's just, you know, you have to have legal parking.
Right.
And like she mentioned about restaurants and this type of thing. But right now, there's nothing on the books to illustrate that.
So um and I think for staff, what we need to know basically, are we talking arts, entertainment, recreation type of uses? Or are we talking just a, just a passive green space park?
Well, from my perspective.
So we use the NACE code and believe it or not, those are two different uses.
From my perspective, why not you do some research and put something together to bring back to us? Can you do that?
We can. Um when we did this previously, we had done some research and there wasn't a lot of information provided by counties. Didn't seem like they have a lot of the profit parks, I guess, or um what they had or county owned and operated. Um and then, but we will dive into that deeper. I looked through the American Plan and Association because they have a lot of literature available. But we'll spend some more time on that, maybe look a little further out.
Why, why can't you just say that, you know, the parks that are established would follow the same guidelines as the ones that are established by the county?
The county one.
You can't have alcohol, you can't have this, you can't. Why can't you just say something like that? We have, we have community parks all over the county, Robbinsville.
Those are all community operated, yes.
Their grandfather then, they, they don't meet the guidelines.
Well, not only that, do we actually have guidelines for the community parks?
Well, I mean, they operate under rules and regulations if you wanna use their parks, you know, so.
Chairman, you, I don't know if a lot of y'all probably remember growing up, there was each neighborhood had their own baseball team and everybody went around. Nowadays, kids are glued to the phone. I mean, definitely out of all this bad that happened, there's gotten, we gotta be able to get some good out of it. And I think this is gonna. and I think this is gonna be a good opportunity for us to dig into this, to be able to figure out something to get these kids out of this house, I think, and get them off the phones and stuff like that, but a lot of these new neighborhoods, you got developments now, they don't leave any room at all for not even a field to, to even take, you know, and go do things like that, so, I mean, we got to start thinking ahead for the future. I, I, I think we could definitely get something good out of this, we just, we need to have them rules so the kids are safe, and the folks that are here are safe. And, and maybe even those parks that are currently out there, I mean, this is just options to be able to, in the future, maybe, uh, improve them even better than what they are currently, you know?
There's nothing to matter.
Right, I mean, you've got little church softball teams, you've got stuff like that, but, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking to be able to, one day, maybe have a rec department in this county, or something along those lines.
We got that.
And, well, to be able to improve it and, and continue to grow it, so.
Well, anything that we do should be in conjunction with them, I mean, since they operate the, that resource for the county, I mean, any rule that we consider, I think, should have their input.
The party's already got parks, right?
Yeah, they got a nice.
Party will do, yeah.
Back behind city hall.
That's in the city, they do pretty much what they want.
Well, we'll certainly, like I said, we'll dig deeper, we'll look a little further out, maybe so, to some bigger communities.
Yeah, that, that was just my concern, not, you know, I.
We looked at Hampton, we looked at.
A little Grinch in the nothing, that was just my concern.
Collin and in Beaufort County, so we'll just look further beyond.
Okay.
Cause none of those, we couldn't find any information.
So, Mr. Chairman, are we supposed to do a summary? Are we supposed to do a summary?
No, that was just to kind of give you, that's, it tells you just a little bit about the continuing ed that would take place during the live webinar, that's all that is. Well, we will, um, look and do some more research and see what we can find on that.
Any other, okay, Mr. Tucker?
Um, Mr. Chairman, we're, we're, what's going on with sand mine that we're, we were.
That's the Deerfield Sand Mine, they're working on a development agreement, so they needed a little bit more time. They planned to be here for November, that's why I was saying we're probably gonna have a heavy schedule, uh, heavy agenda for November. We're expecting that, and, um, I have one rezoning application, I'm expecting another one, and we already have four road name petitions, and we still have, if we are, are meeting November eighteenth, we still have two more weeks before this middle deadline will end.
Lisa, what is the, the development agreement is between, um.
The county council and, um, the developer, of course, but you all had some concerns, and this is a way for them to address the concerns. And staff recommended, you know, that's probably y'all need to come back with a development agreement, like, when your development's done, that was the mining operation down in Bellinger Hill, approved about seven or eight years ago, and, um, so we've given them, we've asked them to come back with that, and, you know, hope, hoping it'll make you feel better that some of these, um, concerns can be addressed through that.
Do we not have to vote on this, since the development agreement that.
You do have to vote, though, for, um, they asked for the expansion of the legal non-conforming use, and, um, in that development agreement, you know, they said they would provide more setbacks on the highway, and, uh, so they're gonna address all of that. They're gonna address all the things you brought up at the last, at the last meeting, we didn't have a meeting last month, but the meeting before that, when they were here.
Again, we are not required in a development agreement to.
You're not, but you can just take a look at it, you'd be, you certainly can suggest, make a recommendation to council if you felt like it's, it's missing something, then it needs something.
So this is bypassing us, has the council already entered into a development agreement with it?
No, no, it has not come to anybody yet, I haven't even seen it yet. That's why they haven't come back, they're working on this, and they're gonna come to you for the expansion of the legal non-conforming use, but they're gonna have a development agreement in hand, you'd be able to review it if you want to make any recommendations to the council.
Okay, and their primary reason for continuing with non-conforming was?
It was a legal non-conformity, they, um, had, you know, they have been operating out there either directly or indirectly through their predecessor for forty years, um, they had all the proper permits, so they're asking to the, to expand the use.
Right, I knew that, but it's non-conforming in what aspect, I can't remember.
It's non-conforming, um, at the time that it was permitted, it, it all conformed.
Right, I'm.
And then we came through and, um.
Changed the rules.
Changed the rules, we've added this resource extraction zone, um, the setbacks were different, you know.
So they're going to conform to the current setbacks?
Well, see, that's the other thing, they had received a variance years ago to reduce the setbacks.
So they don't want to adhere to the current setbacks?
Not completely, but it's not really about adhering to it, I mean, the variance goes with the property, but this is a large piece of property, and they were leasing a smaller portion of it, so their lease. This is a unique situation, the lease is, um, they're gonna be leasing additional acreage. They have, um, reclaimed the one on the east side of three twenty-one, they're no longer in a lease there, that's totally finished and closed out, so, um, this was just, it's a different, it's a little different than what we've seen, I mean, hindsight, had the county thought about it when we adopted, so when we adopted our zoning ordinance, we didn't even have the resource extraction zone then either. That didn't come till a couple of years later. Had we thought about it, maybe we should have looked and said, you know, we have this mine in operation, and this one, and this one, and went ahead and applied the resource extraction zone. But the county, through their non-conformity ordinance, also acknowledges, we've made businesses, non-conformans, many commercial businesses were zoned residential, um, so we've created non-conformities, and that's why we have that ordinance, to be able to address those.
I, I hope they address the safety issue, that was something that our chairman brought up, which I agree with, but, anyway, hopefully they will.
Mr. Chairman, at least all, all of the minings are in the county, none are in the city?
Oh, no, the city has their own.
I know Hardyville's got one in some of that newly annexed area out in Levy.
Yeah, they permitted the one on Levy Road, there's one at the, um, the new Parkway, the East Sergeant Parkway, but we don't see those, you know, they have their own, they have their own standards, and they, um, apply their zoning and their land development regulations to any developments, including mining operations that are in the city.
But shouldn't we as counties know what, know what mining there meant?
You can see that on, on.
Haven't they started sending y'all, um.
Shouldn't we be able to know if they're putting all this mining in the city, and we're doing the same thing? Shouldn't we be able to know about all these mining, still the county?
Well, I mean.
You can go on the internet and, and see it.
Yeah.
What's a new name for, um.
South Carolina Department of Environmental Services.
If you go there, you can.
They have a mine map.
It will show you every mi- every permitted mining operation in Jasper County. I looked at it one time, it's been a while back, but, yeah.
Yeah, when hires brought their application, the engineer provided that copy of that mine map.
We have a lot.
Yeah, you can, it's easy to find online, um, you know, because I don't think Hardyville require, they don't require you to rezone, they, so that really would be, uh, some sort of site plan approval, um, that Hardyville would review in accordance with their own regulations. I don't think so, there's a couple in Reglin, too, that I know of, yeah.
Okay, we gotta be taking that up in November.
Yes.
On the eighteenth, two o'clock.
Mr. Kent, Kent, do you have anything?
I don't.
No?
Thank you very much for serving, have a wonderful night.
I'm ready, in motion.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Take a motion and adjourn.
Two, first and consecutive adjournments.